Hello and welcome to the latest episode in our new GMCC leaders series. The idea behind this is quite simple. Every fortnight, we invite a leader from somewhere across Greater Manchester. It could be a local political leader or business leader to have a chat and answer some questions about themselves, the role they have and the wider context around Greater Manchester and what makes it tick. We are recording these and we're publishing them on the Chamber's YouTube channel and releasing them as a podcast. So look out in the next couple of days, this should be available on both those channels. We started this series two weeks ago with Greater Manchester Chamber President, Robin Phillips, looking at a range of business issues. And this week, I'm really pleased to welcome Tom Stana, the Chief Executive for Salford City Council. And Salford really is beginning to get to capture the headlines around redevelopment, regeneration, and also getting a really good reputation for doing things differently, a lot of reason, but for a really good reason, even more, as we'll find out in a minute. So I'd like to welcome Tom. Tom, welcome. Thank you very much for joining us. And you joined Salford in February this year as CEO. But before we get into your current role, just give us a run through of your career and also what appealed to you about the job in Salford?
Yeah, thanks, Chris, and great to be here today and good morning to everybody. Thanks for joining us with the chamber at this time of the morning. Nice to see you all. And I think, you know, thanks for the intro, Chris, as well, because I think in a lot of ways, the answer to what attracted me to Salford is that Salford has been newsworthy for many years now. I know you say there's a lot of good momentum and positive stuff going on at this point in time, but I think it's been a really positive and to some extent enviable track record for those of us who work like me in a regeneration property, et cetera, type of background. Salford's been a success story, certainly in the region in GM, but internationally really for a number of years now. And I think in a lot of ways, that was, it was that magnetism of the city that was the most important, most attractive thing to me. I've worked in my career in regeneration, economic development, property, and a whole host of other community regeneration related roles. Prior to Salford in Wakefield in West Yorkshire and before that, as some of you on the call may know, in East Manchester in Oldham and then also in other parts of the North West and in London. So quite varied experience, but always in, you know, quite challenging inner city urban environments, a bit like we have here in the city of Salford. And it's the magnetism of the city, together with that challenge combined, that's really the most attractive thing for me. You know, we're driving the growth of Greater Manchester with Manchester itself in particular, but at the same time, we're still 17th most deprived authority in the land. So we've got quite a way to go, I would say, in terms of closing that gap. And that ambition, aspiration is very much in my DNA and in Paul Dennett's DNA as our city mayor. So that's a big, big challenge, but big opportunity for regeneration in the round, really, Chris.
Absolutely. Great, great stuff. And just for people listening in, I mean, they may not know and understand the workings of local authorities, but what does your role entail as Chief Executive? Is there a typical day? I'm guessing not really, because it's pretty much like any job in local government now. It varies hour by hour, I guess, really. But what would you summarise as a sort of a typical day, the sort of things that you're dealing with?
A typical day is probably best described as having a plan and an agenda for the day and then binning it by about nine fifteen, really, when other things happen and take over. So, you know, a CEO role has something for everyone, shall we say, a bit of everything. You know, lots of core business day job stuff with environmental services, social services, social care, health, et cetera. Lots of activity around the regeneration agenda inevitably, I think, in most councils, but particularly here in Salford. Lots and lots of politics inevitably, because a big part of my job is working at that and managing that interface between the officer corps at the council and the political leadership. And, you know, to be frank, lots of surprises, Chris. I mean, we work with partners galore in the public sector, the private sector, the voluntary sector. But from one day to the next, you can have surprising things that happen politically. You obviously have a big element of crisis management if things go wrong and you've got to kind of react rapidly to that. And I think one of the most enjoyable bits of the job, to be honest, is most days involve to one degree or another an element of being an ambassador for the city. And, you know, politicians are here to do that first and foremost. But increasingly these days, as senior managers, senior leaders, we are personally, you know, very visible, we're accessible. And we get out and about on the circuit. We want to talk to partners. We want to talk up the city. We want to work with people like yourselves in the chamber to promote Salford and to promote the agenda we've got and to, you know, keep ourselves very firmly on that internationally recognised map as a investor destination and a place to do business with.
Absolutely. And Salford is also unique within the Greater Manchester authorities as having an elected city mayor in Paul Dennett. How do you work with Paul? Because obviously, you know, that is different, like I said, from the other nine areas that make up Greater Manchester. We've obviously got Andy Burnham as the overall Greater Manchester elected mayor, but Salford, like I said, the setup there is quite different. Who does your role work with Paul and vice versa?
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is very different in governance terms. I mean, anybody who knows the kind of inner workings of how councils operate will know, you know, in a mayoral model, you have a much higher level of political autonomy. You have higher levels of delegation, you know, and decision making that can be made through that role. Most importantly though, you have a higher level of visibility because of a personal mandate. So whereas a council leader is elected by a particular ward and then becomes leader, you know, through the majority group, a bit like the Prime Minister in Parliament, the city mayor is elected by the whole city. And Paul's mandate was refreshed again at the local elections we had in May. We ran a huge volume of elections in the city in May for the city mayor, the whole council. It was all out elections for the whole council and for the Greater Manchester mayor as well. So I think the role brings a level of authority, autonomy and mandate. And in any of these roles politically, Chris, you combine that with personality. And Paul is a very driven, very passionate, very committed leader. You know, I think his politics are very, very clear in terms of the direction he wants to give to the organisation and the city. And his personal passions around anti-poverty and particularly housing and homelessness, combined with inclusive growth are very, very strong. So for me, you know, that is not as a political comment, but that is a good fit in relation to values and all of the anti-deprivation things that drive me in my role. And I would describe our relationship as, you know, necessarily intense, quite honestly. You know, it is daily, often hourly, often half hourly contact. And, you know, we keep that, we keep that alive because that's what drives what we do for the organisation and we need that visibility and contact. And it helps to absorb some of the other pressures that I get from the organisation and that he gets politically through how we kind of fuse that relationship together. So, yeah, it's time intensive, but it's time intensive, I would say, in a very productive way for the city.
Yeah, really unique insight then into a different setup from other areas in Greater Manchester. I love that phrase, necessarily intense. I'm gonna, I'm gonna borrow that one because there's certain relationships I've got with people that are necessarily intense as well. So I quite like that. And I mentioned the other nine areas throughout Greater Manchester. Honestly, Salford now is, like I said before, the reputation for doing things differently, doing them really, really well is increasing. Is the friendly competition between those other local authorities? And how much of that then gets turned into that sort of collaborative action? Because one thing to say about Greater Manchester is, you know, the local authorities here are focused on moving forward. But obviously, you know, you've got differences in each of those areas. How do you find it working with those other areas and regions within Greater Manchester?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it takes time to get used to how GM operates. But I think what's been an advantage for me personally is not being completely new to GM. You know, I've worked here before. I know the combined authority, a lot of the individuals, a lot of those relationships. And I think, you know, there is always a healthy competition between local areas because ultimately the individual local authority is trying to promote its place and its growth positively. I think what's different about GM though is the economic geography means, you know, we are essentially a monocentric city region as opposed to a, you know, a polycentric region, which was much more the case in West Yorkshire. You know, we have interdependencies that we all know and recognise. That means the regional centre and the big growth zones, including areas like the new Northern Gateway across Bury, Rochdale and Oldham, they've all got to be successful to keep the city region successful. And whilst we are, you know, at times, as you say, Chris, we're in, you know, healthy, productive competition. I think GM over decades now has been born on collaboration and driven itself on that collaboration. And I think there are great examples going on of that on the agenda now. You know, all of our collective lobbying and our collective view on transport and infrastructure, despite some of the recent disappointments, you know, we're pushing in the same direction and we've got, you know, unified views as to how that network should operate and grow and where we want to take that in relation to mobility as well as carbon neutrality. And also I think on innovation, I would mention as well, you know, we're coming together in terms of the sectors, the economy that will drive the future, job supply and job opportunity for Greater Manchester. And that's as true of the region as a whole as it is of the innovation triangle comprising, you know, Media City, the university and the hospital here in Salford really. So I think getting those agendas moving and getting a positive momentum where we're coming together for the region has been such an important part of GM, all the way back to the birth of AGMA many, many years ago. And that's really what's driven the success combined with that economic geography that means, you know, we are, we're inevitably interdependent. And I think that's why in GM, in contrast, you might say to some other regions in the UK, you know, you do see bits of competition, but I don't think generally you see unhealthy competition. And I think that's a positive and, you know, something that I very much subscribe to in the way that I want to carry out my role in Salford.
That's a, that's a really interesting answer. And that was something I, a previous guest on the series, Robin Phillips, just wanted to know a little bit more about that. You know, that sort of competition bit between the areas within Greater Manchester. I'm just going to touch now on Covid and just to try and get your sense of what sort of impact that has had on, you know, the, both the city council residents in Salford and also the businesses as well. Because, you know, we're at an interesting stage in the pandemic now. We seem to be sort of all with the worst, but there's always a sort of cloud on the horizon. So we're not quite sure where we're going. Obviously, you've been in post and you joined Salford sort of midway through the pandemic or whatever. But just from your view and your experience, what sort of impact has it had on everyday life within the city?
Well, I think on a public health and economic front, Chris, it's been pretty devastating, to be honest. I would say, you know, everybody on a personal level has a story of attachment that's been impacted through Covid, whether that's friends, family, colleagues who've been ill, if not who've passed away through the pandemic. And we've seen a very tricky, challenging, I think, domestic and mental health impact from the pandemic in relation to services we provide to the community, but also how we operate as organisations. And, you know, let's not forget that although we've carried on running all of those frontline services, we've also had significant imposition of restrictions and isolation and all of the kind of negative connotations of all of that. And needless to say, the economy's been impacted, you know, we've lost significant volumes of GVA through restricted economic activity. We've had a lot of our leisure tourism destinations that have been closed throughout and business impact and the mobility of labour and of goods and services has all been quite hard hit. I think on the upside though, you might say there've been some kind of curious sort of by-product benefits of all of this. I mean, clearly the temporary carbon footprint impact has not been a bad thing, although, you know, anyone trying to drive around the Ring Road or the M60 for that matter will know that that seems to be flipping back the other way rather too rapidly. But I think organisationally as well, we've kind of proved the, proved the case for both very, very creative collaboration in response to Covid, from public health all the way through to social care, housing and more besides. We've also proved the things we've been talking about, but not frankly delivering on for years around remote working and all of the possibilities of digital. So there are some, I think, organisational benefits that we can glean from all of this. My biggest fear with it, Chris, to be honest, is I think the economic bounce back is starting to come through. But what really worries me is the hidden effects that Covid is now starting to reveal in children's services and domestic abuse and all of those sorts of things. And those are, you know, those are big, big pressures for the public sector to try and absorb in what was already quite a tight financial climate. So, you know, I hope like you do that we're on the kind of pathway out of all this now. I hope we don't see another uptick in case numbers. And I think we've to keep our pressure on the vaccine programme and more besides as part and parcel of this. But, you know, let's not pretend for a minute we're completely out of the woods yet because I think there is still, still a way to go on what's left of Covid in the community.
Yeah, absolutely sobering comment there really, I think, that ring tree with a lot of people. And thanks, Tom, for that. Going to turn around now to something a lot more positive. And obviously, the assets that Salford have, you know, for example, there's Media City, fantastic university. We've obviously got, you know, the RHS Bridgewater Gardens now completely, another unique opportunity. How beneficial is it to Salford to have those types of things? And is it a case sometimes people get a little bit sort of blasé about it because they're the, and I guess it's a case really of having to constantly remind people and say, look, these are world-class assets we've got on our doorstep. And how do you make the most of those? I guess that's the, that's the trick, isn't it? It's one thing to have something like that, the next bit is how do you actually build and get the benefits in there?
Yeah, no, absolutely is, Chris. And I think, you know, you've listed some of the, you know, the fantastic assets in the city. And I think lots of people know the story around the development of those and the benefits that they've brought, obviously not just to Salford, but to Great Manchester and to the North West really. And the RHS is almost the icing on the cake in that respect. It's a phenomenal visitor attraction for the north of England, quite honestly. And that's, you know, no understatement. I think the complacency risk though, that you, I think you're kind of alluding to is very real. And I kind of talk about that, I'm quite open about that, that what we cannot do in Salford is to pretend that it is job done in relation to those major kind of stellar attractions and regeneration success stories. Because, you know, the truth is, as I mentioned earlier, the deprivation statistics, the social exclusion and the enduring poverty in the city is a massive, massive challenge for us to confront. And I think the trick to this is for the council to never be reticent and always be brave and bold about talking about and developing that inclusive economy, inclusive growth agenda. A big part of the key to that for me is labour market and skills interventions to improve economic mobility and improve the accessibility of those new jobs to local residents who live here in the city. And I think without those kinds of interventions, there is always a risk that what you will see is the big shiny projects and what you won't see is the poverty and the enduring challenges for local residents and families that some of those can sometimes disguise, quite honestly. And, you know, we're very serious about that in the council. I'm very serious about that personally. The leadership team here is, and absolutely our political leadership is very, very determined about it. And I think with that kind of backing, you know, we can get some traction, get some inroads on those agendas. And, you know, we're very proud of the pipeline of projects. We're very proud of the business relationships and all of the things we've got to go at here in Salford. But we don't want to pretend that we're not a city without substantial poverty challenges to address. And, you know, in many ways, I think that is the right and proper DNA for local authorities to deal with those issues. It's difficult, it's not quick, and it's kind of gritty determination that you need over many years to kind of turn the corner on those things. But it's something that we are absolutely serious about so that we don't become complacent about a track record of success that we've had to date.
Interesting points. And just picking up on that point as well, and the next question really is around the sort of equality and inclusion strategy. And last week was Living Wage Week and Salford is a real living wage city, which is so important. We get that bit in about the real living wage, not just the national living wage. I think it's the real living wage bit, which is so important. And I guess that is so important, isn't it, to underpin the investment that's coming in, the development of businesses? How easy is it though to get that sort of traction and momentum going around those sort of strategies and that awareness? Because obviously with things like the real living wage, you've got to get employers to, I've said buy into it. And obviously I have to buy anything, but they've got to take it on board. Is that still a struggle and are people a little bit more open to those type of things now?
Well, I think being straight about it, Chris, yes, it is with some employers. You know, not everybody does buy into this whole agenda of social value and inclusion. But I think what lots of employers see in Salford is a, not just a city council, but a city community and a private and voluntary sector environment here that is very, very serious about that whole agenda. I mean, that's why, you know, you mentioned the real living wage. It's why we have more than doubled the number of major employers who subscribe to that in the city since we first, you know, pioneered that whole approach to taking the real living wage forward in the city. It's why I'm a commissioner on the Living Wage Foundation. So I'm actually involved in all of the kind of economics and policy around the level at which we set that real living wage nationally. And, you know, what we put out there is really a kind of challenge to people that, you know, yes, we are investment friendly, we are investment ready in many respects for significant pipeline of projects. We're an enabler for regeneration and business growth and that whole environment. But that comes with conditionality, you know, we don't just see growth for growth's sake. We see growth conditional on that producing social value in the community. And a big part of that is about enabling people to cope better with what is increasingly a significant cost of living crisis. And it is enabling businesses to have a better environment in which they can really give back to the local community through their activity here in Salford. And that means everything from the real living wage all the way through to our requirements and expectations in demonstrating social value through procurement. And we've got a lot of activity on that in the equality and diversity strategies that you mentioned. And we're serious about that for one simple reason, Chris, which is that anti-poverty deprivation agenda that I've mentioned already, you know. We don't expect to turn the corner on that overnight, but we expect to make serious interventions with serious partners on that. And the real living wage procurement and a whole host of other social value things are big, important contributions that we want to try to lead the way on here in Salford.
Good stuff. Good, good, good answer. And this leads me on to my next question. Obviously, we hear a lot, don't we, from governments about levelling up? Still waiting for that definition in the long overdue white paper, I guess. In your mind, and looking over the next sort of five years to the plans you've got, you've mentioned a few things already about the development of Salford. How does that fit with what you see needs doing to level Salford up? You know, if you were to say Salford needs levelling up, what have you got in the next five years that would actually enable that to take place?
Well, I think, you know, I was giving an interview to one of the trade press magazines the other week. And I said Salford was the world's best levelling up opportunity really. And why is that? Because we've got such a kind of gap between the, and the poverty experience, the lived experience of people in the city and the whole kind of growth of Greater Manchester and to some extent of our city centre here in Salford. So there are many interventions that are about job creation, that are about upskilling residents and that are about improving accessibility and mobility of our population across the city to access those opportunities that we could point at. I think, you know, everybody would admit that the levelling up agenda is, in policy terms, the right thing to be focusing on to improve the prospects, the growth, the accessibility of the north of England. But equally, I think no serious commentator on this would pretend that there is sufficient flesh on the bones yet as to how the government wishes to kind of deliver on that intent. And I don't make that as a political comment, but I think what we're seeing at the moment at best is sporadic capital investment, but we're not seeing consistent block capital investment at scale to enable proper infrastructure planning and delivery. And the rail announcements last week are probably just the latest case in point on that. But equally, we're not seeing levelling up through revenue investment. And that concerns me more in many respects, Chris, in relation to business growth opportunities, all of the kind of shared prosperity fund discussion that is really, really important to what we do with the chamber and on our business growth initiatives and in relation to skills, lifelong learning and upskilling for our residents. So I think we just have to keep pushing on that agenda, quite honestly. And the optimist in me, and I am an optimist, you wouldn't work in local government if you weren't an optimist these days, quite honestly. But the optimist in me says, I don't think the horse has bolted on that. I think the case is absolutely still there to be made for levelling up in the north. And I think Salford City Council is a significant player in that whole debate. And if the government is looking for investable propositions that they can use to deliver levelling up, you know, we're here to have that conversation, as we've proved recently by winning the Salford Rise Infrastructure Investments over at the university, despite us not being prioritised as a priority one levelling up area. So I think that proves the case that, you know, if you can, if you can make the case with projects that are ready to run, that are going to have a real tangible social and economic benefit, then the government is actually prepared to listen. And we're here to have more of that debate and more of that action if they want to come and talk to us about it.
Stuff. And the final question is, it is really about the role of businesses in Salford and, you know, what more can the business community to be doing to help you? And is there a role for the chamber within that to deliver some of these, these ideas? And to really get the ball rolling on some, you know, what sounds to be a great strategy going forward and will deliver for the future? So what more, if anything, can businesses be doing to support that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've got plenty of investment opportunities and schemes good to go. I think probably the two things that excite me most about that new business environment are the social value agenda and working with employers who are really prepared to kind of take that seriously and want to come to Salford and, you know, as new investors or even want to expand their existing activities in the social value arena to help to make an impact. And secondly, innovation. And there's a whole host of different components to that, from robotics, advanced manufacturing, healthcare technologies and obviously digital and production. And we've got a massive, exciting, already thriving ecosystem around innovation here in Salford. And we want that to go further across the innovation triangle and the, you know, those key nodes for us of the hospital, the university and Media City. So very exciting business environment, I think, Chris. And, you know, as we've been doing recently, trying to make that a really strong partnership and an even stronger partnership between our work and the chamber's work in Salford and across GM is absolutely something that we want to be part of. You know, we've got a new senior business leaders forum we've set up together with yourselves, which we're looking to get more folk engaged in. And, you know, wherever we can, even taking the Salford story out to the other districts through some of the chamber events is something we're really keen to do. So I think time's to go out there and, you know, very much looking for a strong partnership with the chamber to help us to take that forward over the medium term.
Brilliant, Tom. Thank you so much for your time this morning. Hopefully, your plan for the day hasn't been wrecked so far, but.
It's been improved by this event, Chris.
Excellent. Good to hear. Tom, like I said, thank you so much. Extremely busy time as ever and to get 30 minutes or so of your time to answer some questions and also get a bit of an insight into your role, but also the work that's going on in Salford is absolutely fantastic. So thank you so much for that. We have got our next guest lined up. It's Karen Smart, who's the MD for Manchester Airport. And she will be on our Leaders Series event on the 7th of December. That's going to be the last one that we're running this year. But in the meantime, Tom, thank you once again for your time. Thank you as well for joining us and look out for the podcast, the YouTube video of this event. And look out for the podcast, the YouTube video of this event and also look out for future events in this series. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you.
Pleasure, Chris. Nice to see you all.